Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started here. And first thing on the agenda for this workshop is Main Street funding request.
Hey Clint, I got a question first.
Go ahead, Rob.
Aaron or Stephanie, could you explain whether or not you think it's appropriate for Seth to be on the dais, or should he be in the audience for this discussion?
Well, I don't think any decisions are being made at this point. I think this is an informational gathering session, so I'll leave that up to you two.
At this point, there's no conflict of interest issues with him being on the board for Main Street. It can be declared, but he doesn't have any personal gain as far as Stephanie or I are aware, serving on the board of Main Street.
So if, let's say, we had a situation where there was a city councillor who was on the board of the Boys and Girls Club, and they were applying for a community development block grant, it would be appropriate for them to vote on that grant?
There's not going to be a vote on anything related to this presentation today. It's just to receive the presentation and ask questions. So at this point, I think it's acceptable. If at any point there seems to be a conflict, then he can step down or abstain from any voting.
I can abstain from the vote when that...
And I'm not for or against him being up here or not. I'm just saying that in any time there is even a potential conflict, every other time I've ever seen it on council, the councillor involved steps off the dais during the discussion as well. So, but it's your call.
It's an option. I don't think it's required.
Okay, then let's go ahead and proceed. Thank you.
There we go. Okay. Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. I want to thank you again for this opportunity to speak with you today. I'm here on behalf of Main Street Grants Pass to share our progress, highlight a few wins, and talk about how we can continue to work together to strengthen our downtown for the future. We'll begin with how this effort aligns with your strategic goals, walk through our journey so far, celebrate some recent accomplishments, and outline where we believe we can go next with your continued support. Let's see here. Let's take a look back and start with the foundation, the city council's own goals, and what set this in motion. Back in 2021, the council called for a stronger commercial district and supported the idea of a downtown merchant association. Then in 2023, you expanded those priorities to include strengthening Grants Pass's unique identity, encouraging business growth, and enhancing the central business district. The council also highlighted the importance of collaboration and pursuing the Main Street certification as a long-term goal. Everything Main Street Grants Pass is doing today traces directly back to those priorities. This isn't a side project. This is the fulfillment of your original vision. So how did we get here? In January of 2023, Travel Oregon awarded technical assistance to Grant to visit Grants Pass. By March, we were working with Civic Possible and Jason Schneider through the summer and fall, and we held community interviews, stakeholder meetings, and opening listening sessions. In January 2024, we presented the roadmap for downtown Grants Pass with more than 70 community members in attendance. And by August, we had officially formed the Main Street Grants Pass Steering Committee. Step by step, this effort has been built from the ground up by the people who live, work, and invest in downtown Grants Pass. Since we last met, we've made real progress. We officially secured a $400,000 rehabilitation grant for the historic King Jewelers Building. That's a major win for preservation and economic impact. We've expanded First Friday events through helping co-promote, bringing in more businesses and more energy, and along with more foot traffic to downtown. And just a few weeks ago, we hosted our first Meet the Board event with nearly 60 engaged stakeholders in the room and a clear sign of community support and growing momentum. But we're not stopping there. We're working to pressure, we're working on a program to help pressure wash the sidewalks between Fourth and Seventh Streets along G and H, make a visible improvement, and impact part of beautification of our downtown. We've also applied for a $50,000 grant from T-Mobile and Hometown Cleanups to repair, replace awnings throughout the district. We're hoping to pair this with some urban renewal funds. This would allow many improvements to happen at zero cost to our business owners and property owners. That's a high-leverage work that benefits everyone downtown. Looking ahead, we see an opportunity to do even more. Main Street is prepared to help with several key events that the city is currently managing, along those as Art Along the Rogue, the Tree Lighting Ceremony, and most notably, the Downtown Cruise, formerly known as Back to the 50s. We believe we can enhance the quality, increase the attendance, and improve the return on this investment for all these events while taking pressure off city staff. To do this, we are asking for a gradual scaled investment, starting year one at $80,000, year two $90,000, and increasing to year three $100,000, where we hope to be sustainable there. At the same time, we're building long-term sustainability through grants, fundraising, and memberships, and some merchandise sales. This is not a blank check. It's a public-private model that maximizes your investment. Use of those funds, where the money goes, most of the funds, the people doing the work, staff, outreach, coordination, and leadership. When we have the dollars set aside for contracted services, operating expense, and programming. And importantly, we operate, we will operate at a zero net revenue basis. This means that every dollar reinvested into visible community-serving improvements. Nothing is sitting idle. So what's the return on the investment? Well, higher property values, increased tax revenue, more jobs, better tourism, greater foot traffic, improved safety and vibrancy. It's a flywheel, and the more we put into it, the more we'll get out of it. Main Street Grants Pass is a strategic initiative rooted in our own goals and already producing results. We're not asking for handouts. We're offering a partnership, and we're inviting you to help us scale what's working. Thank you again for your time, your vision, and your continued support. Happy to answer any questions. And also, there are a couple of community members here that would like to speak on behalf of Main Street if that allows.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Anybody have any questions up front? Rob?
Yeah, thank you. On slide seven. Right, the funding, thank you. So you've got, in the left, the left column of figures, we've got, you know, city funding, you've got $80,000 there, which, you know, hasn't been secured yet.
Correct.
So I'm just wondering, on the other ones, Friends of Grants Pass, Grants, Funding, have any of those been secured?
No, we're just starting our membership drives. We're continually getting members. Some grants we missed out on. Another grant that we're working on right now, like we said, was the T-Mobile grant. That'll help more with active, physical work and labor. Fundraising events, again, we're just starting. So these are all projected numbers as far as a performa goes.
Okay, and when you say Friends of Grants Pass, can you define that? I have no idea.
It's our membership drive. It's what Main Street calls their memberships as Friends of Main Street. So that'd be anywhere from property owners, business owners, and then we also have smaller programs for people that aren't within our district, that if they want to participate.
So when, if people want to become members, what typically does that cost, or what?
Oh, anywhere from $60 a year up to $600 a year, just depending on the level of promotion that they're seeking or what they want to benefit from. We have four tiers of business owner levels, and then two tiers of property owner levels.
So when you say depending on how much, how much participation they want, does that mean that they're kind of buying some service from you guys?
They're buying some service mostly through promotion. So that's biggest level is how many times their posts will get seen, or how they want to participate, and what their return is on that investment.
Thank you.
When did your membership drive start, and how many members do you have currently?
We're probably about, I mean, truly from our Meet the Board mixer is kind of when we're calling our membership drive starting. And I think right now we're at like 12 members.
12 members, and what date did you start?
That would have been, that would have been about, what was that? June, yeah, June 5th.
June 5th?
Yeah.
Of this year?
Yes.
Okay. 12 members, okay.
I got Rob and then Victoria.
Of those 12 members, are any of those the board members, or are those other people?
It's a mix. There's definitely board members that are supporting the project, and they're on there. And then there's a, I'd say it's probably 50/50 right now.
And the word that you used, you have board members, but you also have a steering committee. Is that different from each other?
No, the steering committee was the original, kind of find a board. Then once became our, once became a C6, then we obviously assigned a board from there. The steering committee is now being pushed into our four pillars, which are subcommittees.
Victoria?
The second to the last slide, expected economic and community benefits. There it is. So I wonder, I know it's new, but do you have any numbers for the higher property values, or increased tax revenues, or job creation?
I mean, no, no. I don't have any numbers. I mean, it's our goal to improve downtown, and I think some of that is going to come through, like the revitalization grant that we just got for the King Building. You know, that'll employ a number of people, that'll beautify that building, it'll increase value, so.
I took one of the tours, and it, I mean, it's wonderful. Any anecdotal, or just from stories that some of the members have told, that you can share with us about their experience with job creation or anything like that?
I think we're still a little too early on to kind of, kind of get into that. I mean, we've had a huge success with First Friday. If anybody's been down First Friday the last two or three of them, you know, the traffic downtown through helps of John Glarren, who's on our board, he's really been co-promoting that, getting other vendors. Traffic and vibrancy has definitely increased. So, you know, hopefully that, we'll see a return on that.
Thank you.
I got Kathleen and then Indra.
Yeah, so I was wondering on slide, well, the allocations, budget allocation, use of funds, exactly what are the taxes, and is that benefits? Or B E N, I don't know, it doesn't finish the sentence.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Could you explain what those are, please?
Staff salaries, that just kind of grouped in. You know, we'll need to find an executive director. Right now, we're all volunteers. So we're just, it's just a projection.
Yeah, so I was more interested in what kind of taxes he would be allocated.
I'm not sure why that got in there, but I threw this together last minute, so I think I was copying and pasting from some other stuff, and I probably, that was probably a mistake. It was many benefits, so, yeah. Hopefully, we, just depending on what that executive director position is gonna equate to, and what they're, we're gonna have to offer them, so.
Okay, Indra?
Hi, thanks for coming.
Of course.
On these expanded rule, Art Along the Rogue, July 4th, downtown, these are all longstanding events that have happened in Grants Pass?
Yes, they are.
I'm not, so are you looking to take those over from organizations?
We're looking to help the city any way we can.
So does the city run all of these? For some reason, I thought there were some that were run by other organizations, volunteer organizations.
Art Along the Rogue is a project that the city took on a few years ago. They may have better dates on that than me.
Yeah, we are, we budget for Art Along the Rogue, 4th of July, and...
The Christmas lighting?
And the Christmas light.
Yeah.
Christmas tree lighting ceremony.
So how did that work financially before, if Main Street doesn't do it, how does that work? Basically, we would be giving, I mean, I guess I'm trying to get of what's going forward. Would we, the city, then be just giving money to you to do it instead of the city doing it? I would like to know more about that.
That ultimately depends on council. Just a brief history, you know, this was, those activities and events were always run by a third party, not by the city primarily, except for Art Along the Rogue. Art Along the Rogue, the city has had since basically its inception. The other events were usually put on by either some kind of nonprofit, Town Center Association, et cetera. We contracted with Experienced Grants Pass, which was Jean Bone at the time. He did the Christmas tree lighting and some of the 4th of July activities. When those contracts went away, the city did try to approach the community to see who in the community would be interested in taking on those events, and no one took on the 4th of July fireworks, or the Christmas tree lighting ceremony. Council did not want to see those go away, so they asked what it would cost for us to do that. We allocated $50,000 for all three events. It's approximately $25,000 for Art Along the Rogue, $10,000 for the tree, and $15,000 for the 4th of July.
And the staff, the city staff puts that, has put those on then?
Yeah, city staff is the ones that are doing those things. So that's sort of a brief history on the events.
Thank you, and I have one other question. What was it? Oh, okay, that's great, the $400,000 grants. So can you elaborate on how that was put out? And did the King Jewelers, did that, is someone, did someone on the board get that grant, or associated with the board? I just want to know how that was put out, because I know that not many people had heard about that, and it was kind of rushed, so how?
Yeah, it was, it was very rushed. I mean, we weren't even, we were just an affiliate program with Main Street, so we didn't even have a board put together yet. We collaborated with some of the city liaisons, Dana's team, reached out to some business owners down in the downtown district, got the word out quickly. We had one person that just happened to be in the right position to apply for it, and that was Scott Hillier, and yes, he is on our board. But the grant is very intensive. It's over 37 pages long, and he was, had the position to hire a grant writer to write that grant. And, yeah, so it was, it was a quick rush. We had eight applicants that applied for it. And through, where everybody was at in different stages, he was the one that was most prepared to accept that grant.
Okay, and then the grants, you're, that, those grants, and I understand those were, that was specific for Main Street, that grant?
That is a specific Main Street grant.
But you're going for other grants, so are a lot of these grants open to anybody to apply for, or are they Main Street grants?
Yeah, sure, the T-Mobile grant that we're going for right now is $50,000. It's a quarterly grant. T-Mobile has like $250 million, so we've applied for that, and we have to do something that's a beautification of our downtown. Our board voted on putting it towards an awning program to clean up some of our awnings downtown within the Main Street district.
Okay, and then, sorry.
If we get it.
Along with the grant, so Aaron, do we have a grant writer that applies for grants such as these as well, or no?
Our own individual departments or divisions do the grant writing. We do not have a specific FTE for grants.
All right, I got Joel and then Rob.
I just had two questions. Good presentation, and thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
And it's...
It's not my strong suit, but thank you.
Well, no, you just do the best you can. We'll do the same. So when I look at two-thirds of your budget allocation, it's salaries and operating expenses. And then I look at the city's contribution. Which one of those, of those four areas you have for programs and activities, what percentage of that grant would actually go into programs and activities?
I don't think I'm following you.
Okay, so...
The money that we're asking from you?
So I don't, I don't have any hidden agenda.
Yeah.
In the past, when we've worked with nonprofits, we've been reluctant to fund salaries and operating expenses, and we fund programs and activities. So for example, the grant that we're putting out is for infrastructure, for homeless can be used for salary. And so I was wondering on this, three-quarters of your total budget, which is maybe reasonable for a nonprofit starting out, how much of the taxpayers' dollars, the marbles, are going towards that rather than the programs and activities?
I mean, as of right now, I mean, probably a good chunk of that. I don't have the exact number.
Exact figure?
We still need to figure out what it's gonna cost to run these events. We're hoping to bring in sponsorship money, but, you know, obviously, we know it's gonna cost $50,000 a year to kind of maintain the current projects you guys are doing, taking on projects like Back to the, or bringing back the cruise is also gonna be a very heavy lift, and that's one of our flagposts that we really want to focus on, so.
Sure, which is an important event.
Yeah.
So that leads to my second question. Are you looking then to the city to fund each of these events in addition to this money that you've requested today?
Probably some extra assistance to get started off, to get them kicked off, probably yes.
And so how much?
I mean, that's up to you guys to go on.
Yeah, so that would be, if you're gonna take over those events as you have in your programs, and what I hear you saying is the city has to fund those as well.
Probably for us to get started, because we have no money.
Okay.
I mean, until we get, until we get a set, probably, you know, first, at least our first year under our belt, and we can start showing proof of concept.
Okay, so then that leads to the third question, and then I'll be quiet, and I appreciate your candidness, and don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, that's fine.
So your allocation, you have a multi-year budget, which is great. It talks about thinking ahead, and that budget increases. What does the increase in budget go to, over and above what you're gonna spend the first year, if we're already gonna pay the additional dollars for the special events?
Well, hopefully that, hopefully that additional dollar in year one of special events will get absorbed as that, as that increases, so.
Right, so but then you, but then the budget, when I look at the sustainability plan, there's an $86,000 increase by year three. And I'm sure inflation's part of that.
Well, I mean, we hope to grow membership. We hope to also apply for more grants over the total value. You know, the city requests funding, you know, we go from 80 to 100, and hopefully that'll project into what we, what we're trying to operate on.
It would seem to me like if you were more successful, or even more successful than what you are in getting membership, that the city's funding request would probably decrease over time, not increase.
That's one way to look at it, yeah.
Okay.
I got Rob next.
Thanks, Joel. So you said on the Art Along the Rogue, on the major events that are listed here, that Main Street is prepared to help. So I'm not exactly sure what, what those words mean. In what way are you guys prepared to help?
You tell us.
Okay.
I mean, we don't know, right? I mean, it's, how do you, how do you guys want us to participate in those events? I mean, right now, they're yours.
Okay.
Do you not want them to be yours anymore, or do you want them to be ours? I mean, that's up to you guys.
Okay, thank you. And then I'm wondering on the awning grants, what kind of timeframe or cycle are those grants on? In other words, when, when are you likely to hear whether or not?
We'll know August 21st.
Okay. And is it gonna be like the full 50 or zero, or could it be something in between?
I believe it's all or none.
Okay. And then how would, how would awnings be chosen, as far as, how would business or property owners be chosen to?
They'll, they'll need to be members of Main Street. That opens you up to those grant programs that we're applying for. And then it'll be, you know, you ask for what you need. We'll put out a survey or a request. You submit what you need done, whether it's cleaning, replacement, and we'll, you know, the longer the funds are there, first come, first served type scenario.
So the recipients, going back to something I asked earlier, I guess, with regards to different promotions that would be offered depending on a tiered, a tiered enrollment schedule, would the, and maybe you guys don't have this all worked out yet, but for the awnings, would anyone, would a higher level enrollment increase someone's chances of getting awning help, or would that be on equal footing?
I think that needs to be an equal opportunity. Yeah, I don't think...
So your vision today, anyway, would be, hopefully that would be equal?
Yeah, yeah. I think the different levels are gonna be more of a media buy than, than access to grants. So I think, I think everybody needs to have access to that grant money, whether you're paying, you know, the minimum of $300 a year, or the maximum of $600 a year. I think everybody needs to be, have that same access. So it'll be more of a first come, first served.
Yeah, I really appreciate hearing that answer. And then when you said minimum of $300 a year, did I hear something wrong earlier when you said, was there a figure of $60 you said earlier?
There is, and that's for friends outside of, outside of our district. There's a $30, there's a $60 a year and a $100 a year membership, and we're working that out right now, whether, you know, business current members, business members want to offer discounts to those members, or they're first up on tickets to something or different events, so.
Okay, so from what you said earlier, I thought, you know, that the lowest level membership would be 60, but I guess...
That is our lowest level membership outside of the district, yeah.
Okay, so inside the district?
Yeah.
What would the membership levels be? How much would that cost?
I thought I included this part in this, one slide. It's one, it's 120, and then it goes up to 600.
Okay, so the figure you just mentioned of 300?
That's like in the middle.
Okay, so 120 is the cheapest that a, basically, a downtown business owner could get into Main Street for?
Yes.
Okay, thank, and they would have full, full opportunity to get an awning grant or whatever, full, full?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Michael, I know we have a couple more questions up on the dais, but you did say that you had a couple business owners that wanted to present and kind of get their experience with you guys?
If it's okay with you guys, yeah.
Yeah, if you guys give me hold for a second, I'll get some more feedback. So yeah, if you want to bring them up, Michael, and give them a couple quick minutes, and maybe give us a little context on how they're benefiting from your organization or not.
Nick's semi-retired.
Hello? Hello? Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
First of all, I'd like to say good afternoon, Mayor and City Council, and thank you.
My name is John Connor, and I'm probably the owner and operator of Art Along the Rogue.
Hey, John, sorry, is the little red light on there? Yeah, hit the button one more time. Yeah. Little red light on?
Nope.
Oh, sorry. Start speaking.
The lights covered? Is this, this is where you...
Yeah, there you go, buddy. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll start over. My name is John Connor and I proudly and operated the hall of Downtown Grants Pass for over 11 years. I'm also in the final stages of building Connorfield's brewing in the Applegate with the goal of connecting both businesses to bring more visitors into our historic downtown and deeper into our beautiful valley. As a small independent business owner, I can tell you firsthand, our downtown is the heart and soul of the city. It's where our community vendors gather, where we showcase local talent, and where visitors experience the unique character that sets Grants Pass apart. Downtown businesses face unique challenges. We operate without the convenience of freeway visibility or large parking lots. We deal with aging infrastructure and day-to-day street-level complications. But we operate here because we believe in building a place that's walkable, vibrant, and tourable. Our historic district isn't just charming, it's a vital economic engine. It connects tourism from the Rogue River to the wine country, the forest, and the coast. Tourists don't come here for chain stores, they come for something real, small businesses, culture, and authentic experiences. Sorry, I'm having some mic issues. And here's the truth, if we lose the economic heartbeat of downtown, we don't get it back. Once storefronts are empty and energy fades, it's incredibly difficult to rebuild. And right now, we're at a tipping point. Without intentional investment, we risk losing not just revenue, but the identity of Grants Pass. At the same time, we have a powerful opportunity. Strengthening the economic structure of downtown through thoughtful funding, improved pedestrian connectivity, and meaningful support for local businesses pays off. It creates jobs, attracts visitors, and builds a more resilient, sustaining local economy. And just like we look for the Red Heart icon in the Rogue Store aisles to make healthy choices, we should see our historic district as our Red Heart. If we keep it strong, the entire city thrives. If we neglect it, the whole of the system suffers. Let's make the smart and healthy choice, let's invest in Main Street. Thanks again for your time.
Thank you.
Microphone.
No, 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 that's our fault on that. Sorry about that, too. Did you have any more, Michael? Okay, come on, come up, Nick, and I think we're going to give you a handheld if that's okay.
Okay, sounds great.
This might work a little better.
Okay, perfect. Council, hey, John's comments were totally in line with anything I could offer. He said it a lot more eloquently than I could. I don't have anything prepared, but I thought I would share just a little bit of my place here in the community and where I see something like Main Street being a huge benefit to owning property and being a business owner in downtown Grants Pass. Like Michael said, as I was coming up, I'm Nick Gates from Gates Furniture and Mattress here in downtown Grants Pass. And for most of my career, our store, while many people see us as a great part of our community and I appreciate that, we're all, we're like a little bit outside of downtown, but we love downtown. And I think more communication and involvement of our downtown businesses and extending that district to include everything from, you know, up here at A Street all the way down to the river, to have a more cohesive downtown, to have a walkable downtown, to promote people staying in downtown, is, is an amazing thing. And, you know, obviously with having a building in between those, what is probably considered the historic district and the river properties, we're kind of in this like middle ground right now. So love to help promote seeing a larger downtown, to have more people involved, to have more businesses communicating on larger events. It could be, it could be my fault in not being up to date enough, but I do find that currently I'm not as in much of a communication of what's actually happening, when events are happening downtown, what to prepare for, what to prepare my business for when it comes to downtown events, you know, other than, you know, First Friday being, well, it's the first Friday, so that helps to know that that's coming up. But which months are, is it every month? It is every month, I found out. I thought it was just during the summer, which is my, my bad. But I just think that having a group that can take that part of the communication and the development of more community amongst the business owners and stakeholders, taking that off of the city's hands to make it kind of more for, for the people, for the stakeholders, by the stakeholders kind of thing, would lift a lot of pressure off of your backs right now. And to have a group that is willing to be that stepping stone in between the businesses of downtown and what's happening here at City Hall, I think is a vital, a vital resource for you guys, just like the Chamber of Commerce would be for the whole city. The gem of our, of our community being our downtown needs a similar, similar organization, I feel, so. Again, John put it a lot better than I would, but I did want to just at least be here and show my support for a group like this. I'm, I am currently not a member of Main Street and I'm not on the board, so this is just kind of the layman's encouragement for, for a group like this. And I am very excited about it and maybe I'll be on the board at some point, but for now, I'm just happy to be a friend of this, this group and see the, the huge potential to put, you know, community growth back into the hands of the people that are downtown almost every day of the week. I take a couple of days off a week sometimes, but yeah, that's it.
All right, thank you. And we had a couple of extra questions. Joel, do you still have a question? And then Indra?
I just wanted to follow up. You know, with public money, there's generally not a requirement to be a member of another organization to receive that money, to like with power washing or awnings or something like that and your grants. And you said that, you know, it doesn't make any difference what level of membership that they, they're available. What happens if they don't have a membership at all?
Well, that'll be the incentive to be a member.
So if you had public monies that you were using, for example, to power wash the sidewalk and they weren't a member of your organization, you wouldn't wash the sidewalk?
Public money in regards to your money?
Yeah.
We, the awning program isn't part of that. The awning part is a grant that we're applying for.
Right.
The sidewalk cleaning project that we're working on would be the entire, the entire area.
Okay, so like, so like with the awning project, if there's some city money involved, like with Urban Renewal, that, that applies to all people downtown, not just people that are members of your organization?
Yeah, I mean, that's a guideline that, that will need to be discussed. I mean, sure.
Yeah, well, it has to be that way.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Indra?
Yeah, so you mentioned staff, so now you're operating, you said with zero, you're looking for an executive director. What does your staffing look like now and what are you hoping your staffing will look like?
We're 100% volunteer.
Right.
We're just hoping to get somebody. We don't know. Until we have money, we're not, we're not advertising for employment at all. I mean, we, we have no funds to operate on. I can't hire somebody and not be able to pay them.
Right, but should you get the money from the city? There's the staff salaries, what staff do you anticipate?
This is a performer, this is not a, I mean, we, we don't know what we're going to get or we still got to raise money, we still have to raise memberships and until that point, we don't know.
Okay.
I mean, I, to, I guess to answer your question, I mean, if you look at the averages of city our size and what the Main Street's currently paying an executive director, it's somewhere between 50 and $70,000 a year.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not even asking about money.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I'm not being clear, I guess. Ideally, for our city, what would staffing look like?
An executive director and probably an assistant.
And that's it? That's all you would really need for your program to run?
Yeah, and then, you know, obviously you have your board and you have subcommittees for volunteers and stuff like that, so.
Okay.
Sorry.
And then, no, that's okay. I know it's hard to be on the spot like that.
No, it's okay.
And then you, vision, so you said whatever the city needs. What is your, so what's your vision? What's Main Street's vision of what you would do and want to do for the city?
Our, our vision is to create a thriving downtown district. I mean, so what does that, what does that look like together as, I mean, we're not here to, you know, we're, we're here to support and fit in wherever we're needed. And, you know, we want to increase property values, we want to increase stores, you know, sales and overnight hotel stays because visitors, visitors want to come here. So what, what does that look like? And I think that, you know, our biggest thing is we can do is right now is get grant money to, you know, help beautify our downtown, help restore historical buildings, and improve First Fridays. Those are all just baby steps into a bigger picture. But our vision is to create a thriving downtown district that everybody wants to visit.
Okay, I, and I guess my next question would be to staff and maybe, I guess Rob's the only one or anyone else that has had a business downtown because I haven't, so I don't know. So I'm just, my question would be, does, has, has the city asked for this? Does the city, the city has done some things? Do we now not have time or staff to do it? What is the city's role in this? And then my other question would be, as far as the pressure wash, I just had someone come pressure wash my sidewalks. I exchanged for ice cream, you know, a friend, because I can't afford it. So I'm wondering, historically, have downtown merchants not been responsible for taking care of the front of their shops and why is that not happening?
So I can answer some of those questions. I think the first was related to events and the city currently has those events that we mentioned. I think what's happening here is the Main Street program is wanting to look at different ways that they can provide value to their core area. Some of those events that we have are in that core area or have an impact on that. As I mentioned before, the events that we have except for Art Along the Rogue, we have not historically had ownership of those events. We took them on because community partners dissolved and could not do that anymore. So now we have what looks like a community partner that may be interested in doing some of those things. And I think they're approaching you as saying, you know, if you so desire, we can maybe take these things on with further discussion. From a standpoint of the city, we'd be more than happy to do what council wants to do and where they want to go. And I think from the events they're looking at, well, if you would like to not do those, we may be able to do those with some financial assistance. So I think that might answer your question on that one. Now, what was, what was a couple of the other questions you had?
Just wanted to know, historically with downtown businesses, were they not responsible for upkeep of, in front of their shops?
According to our, our codes, the sidewalks are the responsibility of the owners that are, of the property owners. It's a property owner responsibility, not a city responsibility. City, a number of years ago, did a sidewalk cleanup where we power washed sidewalks for the downtown area. That was, I don't know, seven, 11 years ago or something along those lines, I'm not sure. But it is primarily the responsibility of the, of the property owner to maintain their sidewalks, if that's what you're speaking of. Okay? Yep.
Victoria?
So the idea of a Main Street is such an exciting idea. I know it's happened around in other cities. Do you have, just so maybe we could see the vision of what's possible, do you have information on where, in another place, what, what has happened as a result of, of this endeavor, a Main Street endeavor?
Yeah, especially small communities. I believe there's 39 Main Street organizations throughout the state of Oregon. It is a nationwide program. It's been going on for almost 50 years now. You know, some of those alignments are the Holly Theater in Medford. Oregon City's got a huge beautification and downtown walkway structure that they've helped organize. And this is kind of all leading towards the rehabilitate, revitalization grant, so and some of the value they brought. Clamath Falls, they converted, I can't remember the square footage, but upstairs vacancies into 21 apartment complexes. So those are some of the small things, but it's, it's a proven, I don't have those numbers in front of me for comparison, but it's definitely a resounding success in every city it sports it.
Perfect, thanks, Michael. Any further questions? Seeing none, I will thank you very much for your presentation, Michael, and thanks for the testimony from a couple of business owners that came up. I appreciate the input from the community, thank you. At this time, we'll bring it back to council for any further discussion. This was a presentation that was requesting some funding from the council and the city as a whole, so it is, it's up to you guys as a council to either, you know, push this forward with discussion and further discussion or drop the item totally. It's going to be up to you guys, so I've got Kathleen and Rob.
So I just wanted to say that it sounds to me like this would be a jumpstart with the city money to privatize some of these events that the city was originally in charge of. And I think it sounds like a really good idea to start privatizing some of these things if community members are interested and want to put the effort in and organize and, yeah, it sounds good to me. I would be in favor of it.
Thanks, Kathleen. Rob?
Yeah, I basically agree with what Kathleen said, but I'll make one correction. This was not originally, none of these events were originally run by the city. They were originally run privately and the city took them over, as Erin said, when the private organizations fell apart. So it was private, then it became public, now maybe private again. You know, and I'd just like to, I want to thank Nick for coming today and I'd have to say that even though you say that you're slightly outside of downtown, so to speak, I think that once the library fills that in, I said, you guys are going to be right in the heart of things. So that's, that's the future, we both know that, yeah. It's great. Yeah, they're motivated. And I also, you know, I know that, you know, your family was instrumental in the TCA and very, very strong supporters for a long time, so I'm glad to see that you're continuing with that, yeah. The, I, I think with regards to Indra's question, I don't have all the, I'm not 1,000% clear on this, but I might be pretty accurate. The city bought the pressure washer, I think, in about 2005 or '06. City manager kind of liked the idea of it. And I think as, for a while, as long as I believe, Erin, I'm not sure, as long as Mike Byrd was around, we were doing sidewalks and we were doing some awning stuff as well. And I'm not sure why, you know, he would, why he would have been the one to, why his leaving also ended that, that program, I don't know. But yeah, we were doing it for a while. But, but the more important point is, I think Joel brings up a great point and I think before we would take any step forward at all, we need to know, you know, when Joel was speaking about, you know, well, if we're going to, if we're going to contribute public money, then, you know, do people need to, business owners need to be a member to get benefit? Are we going to have a checkerboard of clean and dirty sidewalk squares for people that are owners and not owners and so forth? But I think that council needs to know what reasonable expectation we can assume if we contribute money to this, can this group exclude non-members in certain benefits? I don't know the answer to that. I don't know the legalities, maybe they can. But I think the council knows, needs to know the answer to that before we would give a penny. Can a downtown taxpaying property owner, you know, be excluded for some of these things if the city contributes money? I don't know the answer. You know, I also, I can, I have something else to say, but if somebody else has anything to say, I can, I can shut up for now. But, or I'll go forward. You know, I've, I've had several property owners and business owners actually reach out to me and it's funny because, you know, almost two years ago now, I sat down for a couple hours with Jason, was his name Schneider? And we kind of, I guess he kind of picked my brain, but I learned from him, I learned from him also. I learned from him also. Um, and, um, I also was at the, the January 24th kickoff of, of this, this project. But since then, I've just basically peripherally, uh, kept half an eye on it. And until the, the big publicity deal with, uh, uh, you know, basically one property owner essentially went in the massive grant and that made the newspaper. And that is when it kind of put it in people's minds. And that's when people started, I think downtown, started actually talking about it more, um, in more practical terms. And frankly, I also, you know, which is really hopeful, but I also had people that, uh, business and property owners that weren't real pleased with some of what was happening and the way that it happened. I have, uh, one woman came to me, um, she probably owns the most iconic building, uh, in Grants Pass, certainly the most photographed, and she's owned it for 40 years. And, um, she said that it actually frosted her to not have, uh, been approached for the possibility of a grant or the, um, to, to even be told about it. Now, I understand that it was, you know, uh, it may have required 37 pages of expertise to get this grant, so it may not be practical for many people who have gotten it. But there were people that could potentially have been and may still be, um, participants who got rubbed the wrong way by the very limited, um, uh, promotion or very limited advertising that that grant was given. And like I say, some major property owners were completely cut out of that process. They knew nothing about it until they saw the, the picture in the newspaper. So that, that needs to get a lot better if you guys actually want to get any members. Um, and, um, it's going to require, uh, a little bit more as one, and this is a different business owner actually said that they'd like to see some, uh, the board lead with their feet and not just their ideas. And it's, uh, in other words, people actually still want to see, other than this $400,000 grant, they want to see some results. So, um, you know, to, that's just, that's just basically reporting back some of what is the, uh, narrative going on downtown. Um, with regards to kind of what I think about this, um, getting back to, uh, what several people have said and then what Indra was saying, questioning, there's zero doubt in my mind that when the TCA was at its peak, I mean, it was a whole different time, you know, it was a different time. But I would say that those people with a vested interest, whether they are property owners or business owners, are going to be way more motivated to do a really good job for downtown than city staff is. I mean, it's, it's, you know, their butts on the line, you know, whether they're a property owner or a business owner, they're going to be way more motivated. They're going to do a way better job. And that's not to say that staff has done a bad job on any of these things. As a matter of fact, they've done a good job on it. But with coming up with new ideas, uh, and working hard and being out there at 11 o'clock at night or six in the morning, um, vested, people who are vested are much more likely to, to really be into it. Um, as far as, uh, you know, looking three years ahead, um, I, I'm not in favor of that personally, because I still want to see this, as far as I'm concerned, um, this fledgling group, um, kind of, I want to see what they can do in year one and how they can benefit the, uh, business and property owners when there's not a $400,000 grant, uh, on the line. You know, what can they do every day for, for downtown people? Which actually, one other suggestion I'll make very briefly, um, when I looked at the, uh, the proposal for the, um, power washing, um, it just, it kind of made me laugh a little bit. Um, you know, there was a time, and this, this group is called Main Street, right? And there was a time when the Main Street of Grants Pass was G Street, when the railroad station was there, uh, when the brothels were upstairs, uh, that was Main Street. Well, more, Sixth Street is more of Main Street now. So why the power washing would be on H and, we limited to H and G, I'm not sure. It would seem to me that it should probably include, um, Sixth Street as well, probably from a, well, probably basically the CBD, which is roughly D Street to roughly J Street or something or K in there. Um, that, you know, why, why that would be excluded in this, this proposal, I, I don't, I have, it makes no sense because that actually is kind of our Main Street at this point, uh, all the way down to, uh, all the way down to Gates Bill- Business. So anyway, that's, that's what I've got to say. I'm probably, uh, in support of year one on this, um, and see what they can do. Um, I am a little concerned, I'm very concerned with what Joel brought up, is how exactly does that get worked out? If we get public money to this group, can they exclude people for certain benefits who are not members? And I, I need to know the answer to that actually before I would ever give a final vote to this.
Uh, Indra, you had some discussion?
I did, and, um, just, I, I came in neither for nor against. I, I think there's great possibility in, in it, but I also do have a few concerns with questions I raised. We're, I mean, we're spending, the grants are taxpayer money. The city, we would be spending taxpayer money to this organization. Um, and so I really look at that. And so I'm concerned about, I, I don't really see a vision from what's put forth here of even what this, you know, the ideal staff would look like or, or where you really would dig in to help, accept help with these things as the city asks. So I, I really would like to see a more concrete, um, plan or vision as to exactly how Main Street, um, would help. I, I think it's sad that, um, our, our business owners and property owners downtown, you know, don't take it into their own hands to make their, in front of their places, look sad. And I'm not sure I really want to, um, I know this is all volunteer, but spend taxpayer money to do things like that, that business owners should take pride in and doing. And I, you know, maybe that's something the city or we could, or needs to be asked about is why aren't, you know, is it, are they not motivated? Why is there not pride in how the downtown looks anymore? Because Park Street went through and did, uh, cleaning as well not too long ago. And now, um, we're asking another organization to do cleaning, and I'm just wondering why the business owners themselves aren't taking pride in that. So maybe that's something deeper that needs to be looked at. Um, yeah, I think I would be foreseeing how it works for maybe a year. I don't know that I would want to commit, uh, to three years either. Uh, and I'm especially concerned with, we budgeted for events and then we hear, so we would give this money and then still maybe they would need more, um, for the event. So I, I just, I'm not sure how that's all going to meshes together, but it could be, um, really great for our city, and I would hope that it is, and I'm, I'm willing to give it a shot.
Uh, Joel and then Victoria?
Well, I, I agree with everything they said, and it's, uh, it certainly has a lot of promise. Um, and, and the first year, I think, is, is a good proving ground. The, one of the things, though, that I would need before I, um, I voted for even the first year is, uh, in the budget request, if we're going to, um, grant public dollars, marbles to, uh, unilaterally to, uh, an, an organization for events, we need to know how many dollars that is before we do that. And, uh, and we don't want to, um, uh, do that blindly. We want to do that knowingly. So I, before I vote on that, that first year, I would need to know what that is and, um, how that compares. I know we had city staff do it before. I know the city staff was funded, um, regardless of whether they did that or not, but that was part of their job. Um, and, uh, and I know we're down in staff. Um, and, uh, so I, I just need to, I just need to have an informed decision, um, and not, uh, not have it be, um, an add-on cost during the year. Um, and Brad, we need to go on a field trip and find a Christmas tree.
Yeah. Could I?
So just, just for clarification here, guys, um, you've had a community organization that's presented you a performa presentation and requested some funding. You are not approving what they're doing right this second. You actually have to, some procedural items we have to go through, so to, 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 I, I love the fact that you're, you're, you're giving points on how you would support this and why you would support it, but, um, this, at this point, you would either need to decide to direct staff to further get some more information so you could put a proposal back together, and then it could go to a business, regular business meeting. But at this point, um, if, we can further the discussion, but I kind of would be looking more for action for time, time-wise to get this either left on the table today or pushed down the road to, to another workshop to get more information so you can actually tailor, um, what you guys would be accepting. Uh, Victoria and then Rob.
So, um, I would be in favor of, um, directing staff to gather some more information for this and, but what, in regards to what, um, Clint just said, but what I was going to say is I, I know what the Holly Theater did for downtown Medford, and it was amazing. Um, since then, there's been some other, um, other things done to downtown that, that weren't so positive for downtown Medford. But, uh, but I know the Holly Theater was an amazing boon for downtown Medford. And I also know that downtown, um, Klamath Falls is amazingly renewed as well. Uh, people want to go there and be there, and it's a great place to be. So I think the program itself is very, um, worthy to, for a city to invest in because of that. And, um, but things that, and so that's what I would love to see after, um, staff is putting together information. I would love to see information on how it does translate into what I originally asked about which I, uh, which were higher property values and taxes and job creation, because that's what it's all about, the program. So, um, and, and I think that it has proven itself in many other places. So it would be a really good opportunity for our city as well. So that would be one thing that I would love to see in a staff, um, in putting it together, is just historical information about, here's what happened in other places. Uh, if, if we do go forward, and I would be in favor of that.
Okay. I have, Rob?
Yeah, so, uh, Clint, I understand your desire to move this forward, but by the same token, the last thing that I wanted to see was for this to be on a business meeting and for us to bring all these things up at that time. So, you know, even if we have an interim meeting, which obviously we would have to, hopefully staff knows the concerns now that we brought up that we would need to hear answers to before we could take a step forward. Um, and I think that many of, much of that was discussed today. Um, you know, I would agree that if you, uh, the figures of what, uh, basically Main Street's, um, calling card or the figures that they actually put out two years ago with regards to what Main Street has done, uh, in other places would also be helpful for, for, um, or examples, I should say, account, for council to see, because that stuff is available because I saw it two years ago. So, you know, you can, you can come up with it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Rob. You, you are correct. I wasn't trying to move this along, but I was getting the feeling that nobody really wanted to, uh, first, push this into, uh, the next business meeting carte blanche as it was presented. So I would advise you guys to push this forward to another workshop and have some more information gathering. Uh, with that, uh, Eric?
Thank you. I thought it was a great presentation. Um, I just, uh, I think this is, this is great for moving the economy forward in terms of small businesses here in Grants Pass. They're a great help, uh, from what I've seen. I think the, what would help a little bit more is get some exact details of what, um, examples, I think Rob brought it up, of, uh, different results specifically in Grants Pass. I know we went on a tour, we looked at various things, but, I mean, if we can see results and, and get some further information to have staff look into, it's great. I mean, so far, everything I've seen is, is good. It's, um, it's also advertising the, uh, the businesses, much like what, uh, happened with Indra there, with the, with Utter's, uh, The Real Talk. Um, so that was free advertising as well, so, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Uh, Indra and then Joel?
Uh, yes, I, I agree. I think some more information and then, um, city staff, but also, uh, Main Street. I think we brought up some questions, and if you could kind of delve down and have a little more information on those, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Uh, Joel?
Well, it's exciting, and I thank Seth and the, the volunteers that brought this forward, uh, and, uh, we just need some more information and, and have it be open and, uh, public. Um, that's what we're about. So, um, I'm excited.
So I'm getting from the DIAS that you guys do want to push this to get further information, get some of your questions answered today, um, and maybe put it on a next upcoming or on an upcoming workshop after information and questions have been, that information has been gathered? Uh, is that the consensus of the council to gather more information and have it re-presented within an, within an upcoming workshop? Looks like we got majority behind that. Um, Brad, you have something to add to that?
Mayor, mayor, if I could just, since my, so my team brings back the right, exact information. What I have down is, can Main Street exclude benefits to certain owners if they're not members? I think that was a key thread today. Um, they want to see exactly how city dollars interface with Main Street's private dollars. Counselor King, did I kind of get that? Was that the gist of yours?
Well, my understanding was the intent on the part of city staff, and, and understandably so, was to get back to where we were before, where a lot of these special events were run by the private sector. And, um, uh, that was going to take some city dollars, is what I heard talking with, with the representative. And so as we, um, to, to say that we're going to, uh, fund this and then have additional money for the, uh, special events, we need to know what that is.
Okay. And then we have, uh, the request for specific examples of how a program generated results in other cities. So maybe a little bit more detail on that, and then, uh, maybe, uh, to Counselor Schlegel's, uh, Grants Pass specific. So, uh, okay. If there's nothing else, I think we got it.
Um, council, you have?
Go look for a Christmas tree.
Okay. Stay on topic. Anything else, uh, council wants to add to Brad's plate? Okay. Um, then I'll leave it to you, Brad. Uh, do you feel that you are properly directed? Okay. Thank you. Um, next up, we will have a presentation, what's the Climate Economic Development Forum update?
I'm Dana Pierce with the Economic Development Division and Community Development Department. And today we're looking at, um, just an update on economic development activities. The council requested an update on several ongoing economic development initiatives. This presentation will cover a follow-up from the May 19th workshop, some feedback from the economic development forums, and also review the strategic plan goals and activities related to economic development. This all relates to the council goal of economic growth. So on May 19th, the council had a workshop to review the current Economic Development Division grant programs. And from that, the council requested a subsequent workshop on two topics. One was feedback from grant recipients on the city's application and grant award process and eligibility criteria, and then more information on marketing, um, to inform businesses of grant programs. So let's just start with the first one, um, talking about grant recipient feedback. Staff did reach out to seven former grant recipients. We learned that the most common way of learning of grants was through word of mouth, connecting with city staff and the city website. Here's some of the things that recipients, um, said about how they felt about the process. They said it was simple, streamlined, understandable, relatively clear, went well, and went according to plan. Some felt it was a lot of paperwork and receipt tracking, but also understood it was important to be a good steward of public dollars. And then some felt it was simpler than applications than they'd done before. Um, they did feel like the receipt tracking, though it was tedious, it should be a standard for any operating business. Some of the challenges that came out of our discussions, um, were related to timelines, the grant requests that people provide bids. And so, um, sometimes getting those bids and then waiting for the response, um, for approval, they were trying to work out the timelines with their contractors. Um, the cost of SDCs came up as, um, a challenge. The cost of SDCs came up as a challenge. One recipient said that excessive costs of SDCs in comparison to the total cost of the project really stood out. Location criteria can be confusing. We have various grant programs, so depending on where the property is located, different properties qualify for different grants. And then just the tracking and communications, someone mentioned that a checklist would be helpful. Overall, though, the sentiment was that applicants were really appreciative, that this assistance is available. There was mention that assistance is crucial for downtown projects, because those improvements are more costly than modern development, dealing with historic buildings. And then overall, everyone would like to receive more money. Moving on to the marketing element, this slide came from the previous presentation, just a reminder about the ways that we market our grant programs. We do have the grant guidelines and applications available on our website. We also use marketing tools like social media brochures, chamber newsletter, newspaper, and sneak preview, depending on the grant, radio committee and community meetings. For urban renewal, we've done our urban renewal mailer and intend to do more of those. And then, as I mentioned before, community partner referral and word of mouth tends to be the most typical with it, people hear about this, as well as calls and inquiries. Some potential changes we could suggest related to our current grant marketing and impacts might be to increase the frequency and quantity of mailers, um, and, or also include that grant incentive content in some of our current forum mailers. The average cost of those mailers is around $600. It does vary, depending on how many, um, properties you're sending the mailer to. Another suggestion might be to do direct outreach to local lenders, since they're typically the, a first point of contact for businesses or property owners related to a project. And we could provide more information to them about our grant programs and educate them to help make that, that connection. We could also regularly schedule posts for our open grant cycles. We do regular posts for annual and semi-annual cycles when they open up, but some of our grants run year-round, so we could do a quarterly post to remind people about those programs. Some potential impacts of marketing would be, of course, increased demand. Usually increased marketing leads to that increased demand. From that, you know, bulk of the funding may end up being awarded early in the year, so that could leave a gap in access for assistance. The example would be with the urban renewal. For example, you know, we have $250,000 allocated for that. If we market and all of that, those funds are dispersed early in the year, later in the year, we wouldn't, that wouldn't be available. That could also then lead to a demand for increased funding allocation through URA, which potentially could reduce availability of other URA priority projects, or funding for those. And then, um, just as we're thinking about this, you know, you could consider going to a competitive model, especially with increased demand. You could, you know, limit the time that you're taking those applications, be able to review them against each other, so a, an annual or semi-annual cycle. In that scenario, you could be looking, I'm just using URA as an example, but that $250,000 right now, maximum award is $50,000, so that's five awards for $50,000. Or if it's competitive, you could also consider awarding more for a more desirable project. It's just some things to consider related to marketing. Now I'm going to move forward with talking about the feedback from the various forums that we've done. In May of '23, we did a forum focused on the Rogue River Highway area of town. We met at the Fruitdale Grange, and just some of the topics that came to the top while we were there was the homeless issue, specifically related to the bottle drop in the parks nearby, which would be Baker and Morrison Centennial Park, and pedestrian traffic concerns. It's a major highway, not a lot of places to cross, so people had comments about that. There was also comments about revitalization of the Miracle Mile. So if you've been around a long time, you may know that, that section of town used to be called the Miracle Mile. And they also had interest in learning more about city incentives, understand, better understanding URA, and, um, just so you know, they, that section of town is not included in the urban renewal, so they had questions about that, too. In June of 2024, we focused on the Redwood Highway area of town, and we met at the Cascades Assisted Living. Homeless concerns were brought up at that meeting as well. There was a good opportunity to provide resource sharing related to workforce needs. We did happen to have a WorkSource Oregon employee there that was able to provide a lot of information and resources related to workforce. And again, always inquiries about business incentives and understanding the urban renewal. Our most recent forums happened just in May and June of this year. We focused on the north end, and we met at the Weekend Brew Company for our first one in May. There, the staff updated the participants on the neighborhood and downtown activities. We let them know about the Washington campus and some of that activity that should be coming soon related to that. Things that came up of concern, parking challenges. Along Sixth Street, there isn't no time limit on parking, so some of the folks felt like that was a challenge for their business. And then pedestrian traffic concerns, again, being able to cross a major highway and have pedestrians be able to access businesses. Need for housing and childcare came up, and then a lack of cohesion between businesses in the north commercial zone, so trying to, just discussion related to that. The meeting in June was also focused on the north end. It was at Udders Ice Cream. And the discussion really focused more on business collaboration and promotion, so looking at promoting, um, we did have representation from, from downtown as well as, um, the south end of town, but, um, they were looking at promoting retail business, trying to strategize a little bit about that. There was also some resource sharing, like sharing our city's small business toolkit with the group. And then we also did receive direct feedback on, on city grants. We had some recipients there that, again, were requested an increase in the match, which is currently, it's noted here, the urban renewal is currently at 25% match. I'm just going to keep going for now, and then, um, if that's all right. But we're now moving into talking about the strategic goals. These are the goals set out by council related to economic growth. What I've done here is break it down. You do have those pages of the strategic plan in front of you as well, so it has a little more detail than the slides do, um, but you, so you can use that as a reference. But what I've done here is just looking at each outcome, the expected results, and then I've made a note about some of the current activities that the Economic Development Division is doing to try and meet those goals. As we're going through here, maybe keep in mind if there's certain activities you'd rather see as a priority, or if it's something that you'd like us to continue the momentum where we've got going, just please take note, and, and we could talk more about it at the end. So starting off, we have, um, outcome one, Grants Pass encourages economic vitality, growth, and diversification. The first expected outcome, which is 1.1 here, is support businesses, entrepreneurs, and nonprofits to be successful. So currently, staff works directly with many community partners, including Southern Oregon Innovation, Southern Oregon Regional Economic Development Incorporated, the Small Business Development Center, Illinois Valley Community Development Organization, Main Street Grants Pass, the Chamber of Commerce, Rogue Workforce Partnership, Oregon Center for Creative Learning. Those are among many of our partners that we collaborate with to support businesses. And, um, this, our staff has also developed and distributed our Grants Pass Small Business Toolkit. This is a kit that really puts everything together, so people that's, wherever you are at in business, you can figure out where you need to go to make sure you get proper licensing, to make sure that you get the proper resources. It connects, provides information on all of our community partners as well, so we can link people up and make sure that they're getting the support they need. For the next expected result, 1.2, increased economic investment and activity. We have been doing our Real Talk Business Forums, their business listening sessions, and we conduct these to get that outreach, to get feedback on our processes and our programs. Sticking with the same first outcome, but the next expected result, 1.3, Grants Pass has a sufficient supply of serviced employment lands in strategic locations. We're currently preparing for an economic opportunity analysis. This is something we would go to a contractor for, and this is to update the economic element of our comprehensive community development plan. That's something that we have budgeted for, and we also can go to the Department of Land and Conservancy and Development to get a matching grant. So we'll move forward with that, probably this fall is when that grant application opens up. We've also are in the queue to submit the, a grant, it's a federal grant for the EDA, Public Works and Economic Adjustment Assistance, and it does require partnership with landowners, so we have been working with, um, landowners out in Spalding to assist with the extension of the sewer service. Another group that we're currently organizing is the Industrial Lands Group. This last week, we met and had the Business Oregon Recruitment Team down. So this is our state's Economic Development Division, and they are recruiters for outside businesses wanting to come to Oregon. They wanted, wanted to come to our area and see the properties we have available and better understand the sites here. This group is also, has put together an industrial land inventory for the city and the county, and we're currently working through each of those sites, really identifying, um, site readiness for each of those, um, trying to really identify the most marketable properties so that we can continue that work to, um, market them to outside folks, or even supporting that expansion of, of smaller local business. We also have, uh, Through So Ready, Business Recruitment and Retention. It's a team of outreach folks. We get together once a month, and we have teams that go and meet with our traded sector businesses to see where they're at, ensure that they're getting what they need so that they could stay here. And then, again, if we can help attract somebody that's going to support their business, it's a good way to learn that. So a lot going on under that category. And the next, next expected result, 1.4, Grants Pass is a regional center to proactively attract talent, business, and investment. Staff does work directly with community partners, such as Rogue Community College's Workforce Development Department, WorkSource Oregon, and the Rogue Workforce Partnership. We assisted in putting in the Small Business Development Center's childcare business development program. They developed that this year in partnership with the Southern Oregon Early Learning Services, and, um, the city's able to provide through our CDBG, CDGB dollars, um, some funding for equipment for those business startups that are here in, in the city. Also, under, um, our Tourism Advisory Committee, they're working on a project really focused on outdoor recreation as an economic driver, so that could be a way to attract talent, business, and investment here. The next expected result, 1.5, increased residential occupancy and livability in the city. One way that we do that in our department is to support the Owl Plaza project and the alley beautification and activation projects. Those are investments in, um, public spaces, and we work directly with our other departments and the public to try and make those what the community wants. We also did conduct a downtown upper story revitalization survey, and the results of that, we were able to put together a property owner inventory of interested property owners that would be willing to, um, potentially modify their upper stories for residential purposes. Those would also require some level of incentive, though, to make it viable. Moving on to outcome two, Grants Pass's downtown is a vibrant neighborhood and attractive destination. The first expected result from that is increased and diversified economic activity within our downtown area. Our department has done a downtown vacancy inventory, working with our commercial realtors and property owners. The goal of that was to really identify our vacancies and then use that as, to strategize on how we could do recruitment downtown. Also, downtown focused cleanup in partnership with Main Street Grants Pass. You heard a little bit about that today. Let's see, outcome 2.2, increased residential occupancy and livability. This is noted twice in, in the plan, but you can see just, I guess, a repeat of some of those activities, the downtown upper story revitalization survey, Owl Plaza, and Owl Be, or Alley Beautification. But we also have other art projects, like the Utility Art Box Project, Art in Motion, and our parking lot art that help attract people and keep our downtown vibrant. Expected result, 2.3, increased commercial occupancy in the downtown area. Again, downtown vacancy, we're working currently with, um, commercial realtors and property owners to try and help solve this problem. And then our URA forum, so noted specifically in the strategic goals, one, it does, it requests that there is more information provided by, regarding urban renewal incentives, so that's one way that we get that information out. 2.4, more activities, events, and recreational activities. Currently, the city runs three events. It's the Fourth of July, Art Along the Rogue, and Tree Lighting. We also assisted with the First Friday Activities, um, that previously helped with facilitation. And, um, and then our Downtown Welcome Center, we participate in those activities as much as we can. We're also open and available to the public, so visitors can pop in, learn about the activities around town, and be directed by our staff down there. We're getting there, you guys. So 2.5, increased safety in the downtown area. We do have a staff liaison for the Main Street Board, and, um, and then also merchant meeting facilitation participation has been a part of our regular activity. This is a way that we interact with the downtown merchants and property owners to really understand what the needs are and to try and identify ways to keep it safe. Um, and then 2.6, utilize Urban Renewal Agency to initiate a catalyst project that will have a lasting impact on the city's economic vitality. Our department had helped to develop the five-year strategic, uh, implementation strategy, and as you know, we're currently still working on that with you. And then, um, we've had previous and upcoming URA workshops. We had the one on June 16th and an upcoming one on August 4th, and that's related to the URA grants and catalyst projects. It is notable that there is an RFP currently being drafted for the Washington Midland Catalyst Site. So just to wrap this all up and bring it together, here's, these pieces are in the plan, they're on the radar, but maybe need some attention. As I mentioned, we're kind of moving forward with that URA catalyst project and the five-year implementation strategy. It's on an agenda for a workshop, though, coming up soon here, August 4th. It is specifically called out also in the strategy to look at a vertical housing tax credit program and the downtown community improvement plan. Those are things that we're definitely looking at, um, but needs some more attention. We would need to spend a little more time on those, those pieces. So I'm going to go ahead and, these are, um, policy questions. The last slide is, is, uh, cost implications. So I'll go ahead and read the policy questions, show you the cost implications, and then bring it back to the slide for questions. Which outcomes are expected, uh, and expected results would the council like to prioritize? Which areas should the Economic Development Division keep focus on, and where might there be a shift in priority? And what new incentive programs and initiatives would the council like to see? So think about those. I'm going to move really quickly to the cost implications. These are the potential activities that I've listed in, in the presentation and their fiscal impacts. We talked early on about increased marketing, so that, that funding would come through the Economic Development Division or the Urban Renewal Agency budget. And as I mentioned, it's around $600 for mailing, and then the staff time involved in making those happen. With a potential increase in the URA budget, there could be an impact there for grant opportunities, depending on what the council would like to do. As I noted before, it's currently at $250,000, and that comes out to approximately five annual awards if they're maxed at the $50,000. And economic opportunity analysis, the estimated cost for that is around $80,000. That does include some community outreach. As I mentioned a little bit earlier, the DLCD, um, does provide a grant, and, um, they would request a match. So for the FY '26 budget, our division did budget $12,000, approximately 15% match for... So for the FY '26 budget, our division did budget $12,000, approximately 15% match for that analysis. And then for a downtown community improvement plan, the development of that, we would have to get cost estimates. I don't have a number for that. So just stepping back, here are the policy questions, and I'll hand it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you. So if you want to run through the first question, which outcomes and expected results would the council like to prioritize? Do you guys have any questions up front first? I have hands raised for questions first. We got Joel and Indra.
Okay, on Slide 11, we're doing economic opportunity analysis, and the EDA Public Works Economic Adjustment Assistance Grant.
Oops.
Joel, get your microphone on, please.
Did I go too far?
Thank you.
Did you hear me, Dana?
Yeah, I got you.
Okay, you're better than I deserved, Dana. So that should show and point the results of those two things for some opportunity for city investment to get some more land shovel ready. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
And so when you talk about a policy question, the opportunity for city investment will depend upon that information.
Yeah, very likely, yeah.
Okay. So then the next thing was the downtown vacancy inventory, and you have that on Slides 13 and 14. The other thing I was wondering about was the type of businesses that are downtown. The new business entrepreneurs may be interested in, we got a furniture store, so they probably wouldn't put in a furniture store to compete with an already very successful established furniture store. We don't have, I don't know what we don't have. And...
A library.
Yeah, a library. So entrepreneurs that are looking for different places would be interested in that information, and locations of those vacancies. And so a GIS layer has been suggested in the past, and I'm sure you're aware of that, probably already have it or are working on it. If you want me to work with your GIS expert, it may be take not very long, I would think, given the layers that you have. But I think that would be another point of information that we could use to focus where we want our priorities on those public questions. Am I going, am I, is it okay? I got about five more.
If you've got five more questions.
Okay, okay. So on the economic growth, Slide 15, I wondered why there were, is there a place there for a policy question on exclusion areas for repeat violators and on increased accountability with municipal court? That could help economic growth as well. I think probably the biggest detriment we have right now is our social conditions and people that need help in all areas, not just unhoused. And the last thing that I would need before I look at the policy questions, and maybe I can help, Dana, but the state of Oregon with, they used to have an economist named John Mitchell, and they had results, and it was statewide, and it was by county. And, you know, you've got a lot of good programs up there, and specifically, how many jobs? Are we putting a million dollars into five jobs? Are we putting $100 into 50 jobs creation? And that makes a big difference in policy, and where we put our incentive projects was how we do that. And so I was thinking the state of Oregon statistics of jobs and trends by sector, by county would help focus our future efforts. And if you can't find that, let me know, and I'll help you, because that has yearly statistics so we can know where we're at. That's, and we've got to know where we're at, to where we're going, and where we want to go, and that would help us focus those questions. So the question is, can I help?
Yes.
Indra, you had questions?
I did. So the URA budget is currently 250,000, and then, so typically, because I'm new and I don't know this, but typically are those requests for the maximum, because that's what I've seen, the two that have come before us are for the 50,000. So the URA, is that mostly huge projects and people are going for maximum, or do we get requests for smaller projects for 5,000 or 10?
We do. We get a range. I think last year, in the last fiscal year, I think, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, I'm pretty sure only there were five maximum awards, and the others were smaller, so, or might have been four maximums. But we have some that are around the $10,000 range or 5,000. It kind of varies. It really depends on what the property is needing and what they're requesting, you know, the investment that they're making. But we do see, so even though, I noted that this would be what, if you did do it at a maximum, like you said, every single one was 50,000, you'd only get five awards. But last year, we had seven awards, and, you know, it really just varies.
Okay. And because it's under 25,000, are we just not seeing those awards because it's under the amount we need to approve?
Right, yes, exactly. The 25,000, anything under 25,000 doesn't need to come before council.
Okay. And then I just had one more. Can you explain the history? So the matching grant of 25%, that was 50 is my understanding, and did that go down? Can you tell me about that?
So, yeah, previous grant programs, they have varied over time. The reason this one is at 25% is based on the urban renewal plan. So that's the information that's written in the plan itself, is that the Urban Renewal Agency may be willing to match at 25%. So that's how that number came about. Some of our other grant programs, previous grant programs from different funding sources, they were matched at 50%. So that is something that can be decided by the board, though.
Perfect. Any other general questions? Seth?
Yeah, I have a couple of quick questions, just first about marketing. I know, you know, I see a list of marketing avenues you guys use. Have you done any, like, I mean, obviously, there's social media, but any other kind of digital, is there any email marketing going on? Is there any kind of lists available of downtown, or, I mean, not just in general, business owners in the area?
Not currently, not for our day.
Okay. I mean, that could be a recommendation, something that you can, I mean, for fairly cheap, hit people multiple times. And then, you know, there's also paid advertising, which, using social media and things like that, that's just a suggestion. And then, do you, is there a way to access the kind of lists/inventories of industrial land that's readily available? And same with, you know, like the survey results from the upper story survey?
Yes, I can send both of those to you.
Okay.
Eric, and then Victoria?
Great presentation. Thank you for that together. Looks like there's a lot going on, and I hope there wasn't too much of a conflict of interest when it came to Councilor Nicholas volunteering her business for the real talk, but other than that, great.
Victoria?
If we're moving back on to Slide 16 on direction, that's what I was going to speak to, so maybe it's going to be after, or I can do it now.
Yeah, is there any other general questions before we get on to the policy? Kathleen?
Yeah, I had a general question about, under the June 25, 2024 Redwood Highway meeting, it says, "Resource Sharing Related to Workforce Needs." I wondered what were some of the workforce needs that would be, came up? Do you know?
Yeah, I guess I have to think back. I know Brad was there, too, and he can speak if he remembers, but at the time, it was, you know, finding, finding the staff that'll stay long-term, you know, and one of the represented folks there was from the Cascade Assisted Living, you know, and so they were having challenges with finding and keeping staff. So it's nice to have some of our other community resources available at that time so that they can speak to various programs. Because we did have a WorkSource Oregon individual there, they were able to link up with one of their programs to help assist, so that was a benefit that came from, I would say. Is there anything you wanted to add about that, Brad?
It's possible. I don't think I'm making this up, but we had Farmers Go Out at that one, and so there was some discussion about the construction community, the construction industry, and RCC's role in that workforce, and the fact that, you know, they no longer have the same workforce program that they used to for the construction industry. I think that might have come up on, at least on a sidebar conversation.
Yeah.
So in terms of RCC's specific programs and degrees, and how those interface, you know, with the needs of our current employers.
Any further general questions before we get on to the three policy questions?
I just had a discussion point.
Okay.
Is that okay? Okay. The other thing I think that is obvious but left unsaid, probably good to say it, the social situation and the improvements, such like we just got the report from OnTrack for a low-barrier shelter that they have in place and treatment center. The economic benefits of handling those social problems, I think, is foremost on, as you had in your slide presentation, and that the city continue to findings the fact that this is what's going on and the improvement's being made, and that we step forward with a positive foot.
Indra?
Yes, thanks, Dana. I just want to say, I think I'm seeing the city reach out to businesses more, and that's very exciting, and I think the meetings that you're putting together with business owners is going to really pay off. There seems to be a misconception amongst councilor, maybe more than one, about what Real Talk was. It is, and the forum, it is not a marketing campaign for businesses. I was happy when the city approached me to ask for a space for business owners to get together, so I was happy to offer that. So Real Talk and the forums is a place for businesses just to meet and get together, to come up with these great ideas. And I was only able to make the one, but I will go to more in the future because I think the more businesses network together, the greater the community and the more asset to the city, and of course, more economic growth. So I'm very, very, we've talked about this, you know, for a few months or so, happy to see the reach out to the business community. I think it's really important, and I think even though there's just a few businesses coming now, that word will spread, and more businesses will be involved in the future. And I think that only helps everybody with the economic growth, so thank you very much.
And I have to apologize, I overstepped Victoria's. She had some more questions, then it'll be for you, Joel.
No, it wasn't a question. It was going on to Slide 16, so for which outcomes and expected results would the council like to prioritize? So on that, I think that it's probably paired, so I would like to see job creation be prioritized, and that's probably paired with what you mentioned, RCC workforce readiness. So, because as was mentioned just a minute ago, there are some businesses who cannot find employees, so why is that? So that would be, so maybe also one more thing that we might want to prioritize on is just an answer to that question, but maybe it's just workforce readiness. Maybe that's what it is, people not understanding how they can search and get a job, perhaps. But, so job creation paired with workforce readiness through RCC, I guess, would be the first. And then a new incentive program, perhaps, would be our youth. Getting into the workforce is something that's super important for teens, so maybe something about, you know, summer jobs or what, things like that. So possibly looking, this is probably a lower priority, but could, and that might also be with RCC, so some kind of an initiative that would be more outreach. I think we do have some with the local area high schools, so looking into things like that would be wonderful, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, guys. So Joel, did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
Well, I just had a really quick comment, and Dana, you'd, just to make things even better, making it simple, economic development, how many new businesses per year with jobs? How many businesses have stayed here with a number of jobs? And how many businesses have left with a number of jobs? Just that, those three statistics are great to monitor our community and our effectiveness and what's going on. And I struggle, and so I'll try to see what I can come up with, and I will go from there. Because, and maybe you already know that, I don't know, but those statistics, you know, just really plain and simple, and have them right out there, and take a look at what the trends are, where we're at, what sectors are going up, what sectors are going down, those kind of things.
Kathleen?
So along those lines, Joel, some of the trends I've been wondering about is, I see the food trucks everywhere, and I'm wondering how much that's taking away from brick and mortar, and what that ratio is, is are we advancing more into that type of business ownership as, instead of having a downtown or a brick and mortar location?
Thank you. So any one else on the council want to have further discussion on which outcomes and expectations or expected results would council like to prioritize? Question number one there. Seth?
Yeah, I would like to put some more focus on the 1.3, the sufficient supply of serviced employment lands in strategic locations, specifically, you know, looking for companies outside of the area to relocate. I know we're, you know, fairly limited with space, you know, obviously, Medford and White City, they've got more land to use, and they pull in some pretty large companies. So, you know, whether that's tech or industrial, I don't know, you know, I think spending some more time, especially from the city's perspective on that, would be great.
Anyone else? Indra?
I think it would be nice to know these, the businesses that are participating in the forums and engaging, maybe following them to see if that's actually helping their business, that engagement, so we know if that's worthwhile to continue doing or not.
Perfect. Anybody else on the topic of outcomes and expected results? All right, next one is which areas should the EDD keep focus on, and where might there be a shift in priorities? I'll weigh in on that one. Grants were a topic in today's workshop, so I'd realistically like to see, you know, a continued focus on the searching out of available grants for our local business people, as well as advertisement and marketing of those grants once, you know, once they're actually found. I think we can all attest that that's a good resource for local businesses, and as a city, we should be doing our part to bring those to the surface and providing ability for local business people to, you know, entertain whether they want to go after this or not. Anybody else? All right, last one, what, so, okay.
I'm late, and I would say just your continued searching for businesses to bring in to our community that aren't here. Thank you.
Anybody else want to weigh in on number two? Kathleen?
So I just wanted to remind us that, you know, in our strategic planning, we also decided that public safety was a big deal for downtown, and how we could incorporate more of that so business owners feel more relaxed, not on, you know, on guard all the time about their entrances and their alleys and the many things that we know are disturbing to them.
All right, last call on that topic. All right, the last one we have is, is what...
All right, last call on that topic. All right, the last one we have is, is what incentive programs and initiatives would the council like to see, or see more of, I guess? Anybody want to weigh in on that? Nope. I think I would just reiterate, continue to search out more grants, continue to advertise to local business people. And I think if you kind of use, utilize that as a backbone of your guys' department, I think it would help everybody in the long run. Any, for, Indra?
They always come late to me, my questions. So I'm, I'm going to add to what I spoke about earlier with business owners taking responsibility for how their front looks and all that. So maybe some kind of incentive, I don't know what that would be, look like, but some kind of a recognition or incentive of, of some sort for those that, that do that and go above and beyond for, to make their business look nice.
All right. Do you feel that you have positive direction?
Yes, I do. Yeah. Thank you for your feedback.
All right. With that, if there's any, no further discussion, I'll say thank you very much. And hopefully you've got what you need.
I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda here is agenda review. Okay, yeah, you're, you're jumping the gun there, woman. I know, I know, almost there, almost there. Okay, so you guys were provided the latest and greatest agenda on the dais, as well as you've been provided the July calendar previously. And we also have been, the Wednesday meeting packet has also been published as of last week. And with all those items, does anybody have any topics of discussion or questions in regards to agenda or upcoming events? Seth?
Yeah, do we, and if I can't get an answer right now, it's fine. Do we know when Main Street might be able to come back? Just, I mean, just in terms of, you know, what we need to put together and, yeah, expectations on that front?
Go ahead, Greg. It won't take us very long to respond to some of the questions. Some of it also is going to need to come from Main Street. They can provide some of the information. So I think within the next couple of weeks, you'd be probably safe scheduling that for another workshop. Yeah.
Okay, Joel? I know we had a discussion, Clint, at our agenda setting session on the item on the back, the non-bargaining compensation and classification task force recommendations. I don't know how close they are to wrapping up those recommendations and how soon that we can put that on the agenda. I guess we'll pose that to staff. How many meetings has the task force had? And where are they at in the process, I guess?
They've had two, and, and Seth can probably explain where they might be at the end.
Do you have an idea on where you guys are at?
Yeah, we've had two meetings, two last week, I think. We have one coming up this Wednesday. So we're, yeah, I don't know exactly timeline wise. I mean, I think we're making pretty good progress, though. We're kind of reclassifying things and with the help of city staff. So this Wednesday, we'll, we'll kind of go through that. And then there'll probably be more updates after that.
Okay. So in process?
In process, but going good. I don't foresee it taking, you know, too much longer.
All right. Thanks for the updates, Seth. Anybody else in regards to agenda review or upcoming events or Wednesday's packet? All right, seeing none. We have a motion on the dais for the committee of public art has presented you guys with a motion. So it's at council's discretion to push this forward to Wednesday night or make a decision today not to do anything? Kathleen?
Well, I just want to say, after reading the committee minutes from the previous months, if this fifteen thousand is going towards a sculpture of some kind to put in the alley, I am not for that. If it's towards the mural, I would be more in favor of that. But I think we really need to know where this money's going to be going before we can, or before I can really vote on it.
Thank you, Kathleen. That's a very valid concern. So you can also direct staff to gather some more information and, you know, discuss this at a further time. I have Joel and Rob. You know, given that new information, which I, hopefully is relatively easy and not burdensome for staff, I think it's ripe for discussion. And we need to, as soon as we get that information, put it on our, our meeting. The other thing I would bring up is the sidewalk murals that we put on Fourth Street, down by the Owl Parking Lot, are going to, are going to be destroyed by a city project. And that was probably upsetting to all of us in terms of efficiency and money invested and that kind of thing. But we do have a possibility, Brad actually suggested the location of the, of the Welcome Center, where you could have those three murals painted on the side of the, of the Welcome Center. And we do have some renditions of that. And also, there's a artist that said they would do it for additional five thousand dollars, which, for that type of artwork is probably a bargain. So I don't know if we would like to include that as part of the presentation. I would like to have that included as part of the presentation. And I, and Brad, I think you have the details on that.
Well, yeah, I received the email from Ward, the chair of HBSC, but we haven't had any more information yet.
Okay. Well, I think, I think that, given what you have there is probably adequate. And with, with the dollar amount and, and the three murals for the five thousand, which is
Yeah.
a pretty good price. So, so anyway, I would like that to be part of the presentation as well. COPA, I would also like to commend COPA and the commission for working together. It makes my job a lot easier. So. Thanks, Joel. Rob?
Yeah, which, which alley are we specifically talking, or are they talking about? Brad, do you know? The third alley?
I don't, I'm sorry. I, I, I think it's the Redwood, isn't it? The kind of, that connects to the Redwood Parking Lot, that, that alley there.
Okay. And so do we have any idea? I mean, I, I walk through one of the alleys fairly often. Do you have any idea of how the artwork has been standing up to graffiti and things of that nature? Have we had to go back and redo much of it or remove graffiti from any of it, or?
I don't think so. I can certainly check with PD and see in terms of, you know, their data, what requests have come in through code enforcement there. But I think it's, there may be a couple of minor graffiti incidences, but I don't think it's been significant in terms of our extra cost outlay.
Yeah, the one that I walked through, I don't, I don't know that I've ever seen any graffiti, but I was wondering about the other installations. Thank you.
Just going to add on to that, too. Financially, we do have a budget line to do art maintenance. We rarely utilize the full dollar amount for that budget.
Okay. Any further discussion in regards to the motion? Okay, so I have sentiment from council that they have more questions in regards to how the money is going to be spent, exact location. Any further questions?
I think the information's right through this question, or right through the seat.
Okay. So I guess the question would be, if staff caught the information for you, how would you then want to be presented? Do you want to push this to another workshop? Or do you want to digest the information and put it on Wednesday's agenda? Rob? Sorry?
I just had, I had a really quick question.
Sure.
Because I'm trying to picture in my mind what it is we'd be potentially approving. So for Kathleen, I'm just wondering, what, what is it about a sculpture that would rub you the wrong way on an alley versus a mural?
It doesn't necessarily rub me the wrong way, but it's, it's very expensive. And I think the mural is just as attractive as having an object in an alley. I think a mural on the side of a building draws way more attention than an object maybe in the corner or off to the side of a park.
Okay. It'd be the same, I guess. There is a maximum price on this of fifteen, so that's not the issue. But a pre, basically preference for a mural. Thanks.
All right. So we have a couple of questions at hand here. I guess I want direction from you guys as the council. Do you want to receive information and post this on Wednesday night's meeting for business? Or do you want to push it to a further workshop? Indra?
I, I think, once we get the information, it should be pretty straightforward. So I don't see a reason to push it to a workshop.
Okay. So we have a suggestion to ask staff to answer the few questions we have and present information and put it on the next business meeting, which is this coming Wednesday. Is that what people want to do? All right. Staff, do you have the exact couple of questions that they were asking? What, basically, what does the funding entail with a little bit more description and exactly locations? Well, the other thing I had, Clint, was the addition of those three murals for five thousand dollars at the visitor's center. Well, I thought that was a, I don't think that is included in the fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand dollar motion. It's a separate, okay, sorry. With the addition to Joel's question, do you?
Yeah. So just to be clear, you're talking about a Wednesday council action item to, to potentially allocate the fifteen thousand dollars for a, but you would like to see a specific project in order to better understand what that money's going towards. I don't know, to be honest, if we can get that. I will do my best between now and tomorrow to get a hold of COPA. If we can keep it on there, that'd be great. We may be able to do that, but I'm not sure.
So we'll just leave it as, tentatively, we'll put it for tomorrow, I mean, for Wednesday night's agenda. But if you, if the information cannot be gathered in time, then we'll have to postpone it. Eric?
Yeah, maybe another approach is to schedule for a future workshop. I mean, this is an opportunity where council's going to have to determine where they're going to get the fifteen thousand dollars for the project. And we'll have to provide that information. And if you're wanting to talk about this more, we can, we'll definitely have the chair of COPA here present for you to discuss. And, and it's all within and well under financial parameters to where you can give us the direction in a workshop and we can move forward and make it happen without having to go to a business meeting.
Okay.
So I'm thinking probably moving into a future workshop might be best.
Okay. With that, further information, is council amenable to put this to the next workshop available? Okay, looks like you have direction. Thank you for your input, both you guys. And there is nothing more on our agenda for the workshop. So we will be ending our workshop and going into executive session. The council will now meet in executive session for the purposes of discussing those subjects previously noticed for this executive.